Yeah, but you've been in an airport.
I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Independent School District School Board 624. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster?
Here.
Thompson here, Arcand?
Here.
Lloyd?
Here.
Daniels?
Here.
Ellison?
Here.
I would ask you all to remove your hats and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have before us an agenda. I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Newmaster, and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And we have an agenda. And we will move right to the induction of our student representative. So, Dr. Kazmicek.
All right. Thank you Chair Ellison. So, we are pleased to welcome our new student representatives for the 21-22 school year. So Lauren Collier is here tonight, 12th grade student at South Campus. She will serve as a student representative for the 22-23 school year. Oops, I gave the wrong school year in my opening part, didn't I?
(laughing)
Sorry about that. This is the 22-23 school year. Lauren is involved in the National Honor Society, the Link Crew Chamber Orchestra, the Homecoming and Prom Committee, and is a Secretary of the Student Council. She also volunteers at St. John's Hospital. And also Ari Van Cook, who was not able to be here tonight, which sometimes happens as our students are very involved in other things. She's a 11th grade student at South Campus. She will serve as the alternate student representative for the 22-23 school year. Ari is involved in Student Council, Black Excellence Club, Speech, Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee, Lacrosse, and is the leader of the Women Empowerment Seminar. So, welcome Lauren and Ari. So I think we're going to do a photo-
Okay.
-of all of us. We'll come out with Ari.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Do it again.
All right.
Ari, from you in the middle. Definitely. If you want, maybe go over here. Around as well. She's obsessed. There you go. Yeah, there's just on either side of you. All right, look here. One, two, three. Okay, two. Perfect. Thank you. Come on. Cause they call chairs.
Low for me.
Look at you. Just.
All right. We have before us a consent agenda. And a consent agenda is the various and sundry items that come to us every month, including donations and from our community. And our community is incredibly generous to the school district. And I want to call out a couple in particular that for the Career Pathways Program, there were a significant number of donations, which is really excellent. And then a wonderful donation from the Rotary for literature, that they are also donating to the Mod A B D I School District. So we are incredibly grateful for the generosity of our community. If I could please get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloit, and a second? Ms. Thompson?
Sure.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion? Ms. Daniels?
Yeah, in addition to all the wonderful things you mentioned, all the donations are significant, but I also wanted to note that we had 280 backpacks from the Community of Grace Church, which I know was a significant amount of work for the people that worked on them. So, it's great.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. Any further discussion? And this will require a roll call vote. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Sorry, hold on. I went, I went. Thompson, aye. Arcand?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye. And then the motion passes, we have a consent agenda. The next item on the agenda is public forum. Public forum of the school board meeting, there were no requests submitted to speak. So we will move on to our informational items. Informational item C1, student recognition.
Thank you Chair Ellison. Tonight, we celebrate White Bear Lake area school students for state level honors. This month's video honors students who represented the district in state level trap and skeet team and fishing team activities. Well done, students, and thank you to the staff and family members who supported the students along the way. Go Bears and roll the video. All right.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of our students. And we will move into informational item C2, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kazmicek.
All right. Thank you again Chair Ellison, members of the board. I think we'll start with our student liaison update.
All right. The first week of school went fantastic with the Bears winning 38 to 7 at the football game on Thursday. This week, we have auditions for the musical Chicago, which will be on Wednesday and Thursday. Football plays away at Mounds View on Friday. Boys and girls soccer play Irondale Wednesday, and girls volleyball plays Tuesday and Thursday. Next week is homecoming, and this year's dress up days are Groufit, Safari, Dress Like Your Favorite Artist, Middle School Throwback, and of course, White Bear Spirit. Also make sure to stop by the White Bear Businesses to see how our students painted the town orange, and go Bears.
All right. Thank you Lauren. Now, can you explain what Groufit is?
It's a gray outfit, so, all gray.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah.
Okay, good to know. I thought it was like a grrr, like a bear throwing, but, okay. All right. Well, thank you Lauren, and welcome again tonight. All right, I'll kick off mine here. So we enjoyed welcoming students back for the 22-23 academic year. Elementary and secondary students began last week, and our early childhood programs begin this week. Throughout the district, there were many excited smiles as young ones entered our front doors after a summer vacation, or in some instances, for the very first time. We wish all of our students a terrific year. To display the excitement in video, enjoy last week's issue of "The Week in 62.4 Seconds", the first of the school year.
Welcome back to School Bears. It's been an exciting first week with our 6th and 9th graders starting on Tuesday with transitional activities, grades 1 through 5, and the rest of our secondary school students starting on Wednesday, and our kindergarteners starting on Thursday.
It's been fun to see everyone excited about the first week of school. Bears of all ages are ready to learn and grow with their new teachers as they reconnect with friends and make new ones during their educational journey through White Bear Lake area schools.
Families got into the spirit by posting photos of their students using the hashtag #BackToSchoolBears. Photos will be highlighted in this weekend's Community E-Newsletter that will be sent on Sunday, September 11th. Go Bears!
Go Bears! Go Bears! Go Bears! Go Bears! Go Bears!
All right, hard to top that, but I'm going to keep going. All right, in addition to our weekly E-Newsletters and usual information shareouts, we invite you to enjoy 2624-inspired initiatives on our district Facebook and Twitter pages. Every Friday, the district will post a video update of the week in 62.4 seconds. And weekday mornings, right around 6:24 a.m., we will share district facts on the district's Facebook and Twitter pages. And with the start of our school year comes the very quick arrival of homecoming. There are many ways to celebrate and get involved, including the afternoon homecoming parade and evening homecoming football game happening September 23rd. Find a complete homecoming 2022 schedule as a news post on the district and school websites. This year, schools in the suburban east conference are going to online-only ticket sales for all of our city sporting events. All conference schools have partnered with Hometown Ticketing to make it easier for spectators. Access online tickets by downloading the Hometown Ticketing app. Information about purchasing online tickets and season passes can also be found on the White Bear Lake area high school activities page of the website. District community members aged 65 and older are invited to apply for our Lifetime Senior Activity Pass, which allows free entry into a variety of activities for entertainment, home athletic contests, concerts, and theater productions, to name a few. If you'd like to be added to the list, call the superintendent's office at 651-407-7563 to request a free Lifetime Senior Activity Pass. The district is hiring for a variety of positions, offering both school day and out-of-school-time hours. Full and part-time options are available. Check out the employment page of our district website and find ways you can join us as a Bear. Family, staff, and community members are invited to get involved in continuing to shape the future of White Bear Lake area schools by joining one of four Strategic Emergence Action Teams, which will be formed to align with the four new updated district strategies. Action teams will meet in September and October before the original 30-member planning team reconvenes in November, and updates are provided to the school board in late November and December. Applications are due this week, so please find additional information on the district's website at ISD624.org/About/StrategicPlanning. And finally, we continue to share information about the district's Capital Project Levy Renewal Question that will be on the November 8th ballot. The funds will be used for safety and security, technology and related services, textbooks, curriculum and materials and equipment, and musical instruments, and transportation. A 10 fax mailer will soon arrive in district residents' mailboxes. The piece covers important information about the district's Capital Projects Levy Renewal Question. Community members will have a chance to learn about the renewal at public meetings that will take place this fall. 8:30 a.m. on Tuesday, September 20th, at the White Bear Lake area schools senior center. 7 p.m. on Tuesday, September 27th, at District Center. 7 p.m. on Wednesday, October 5th, at Onika Elementary. Information about the levy renewal will continue to be shared on the district's website at ISD624.org/CapitalProjectsLevyRenewal. And that's all I've got.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Kazmicek? All right. Thank you. We will move into our third operational item C, or informational item C3, Opening School Report. Dr. Kazmicek?
All right. Thanks Chair Ellison, members of the board. So, this is our annual Opening School Report. We like to highlight work that's happened over the summer, and also talk about the first week of school. And I think tonight, is it Dr. Gillespie who's kicking it off? Is that right? Or Jen Babish with Teaching and Learning Update? Okay, wonderful. All right, it's all yours.
All right. Good evening Chair Ellison, members of the board, Ms. Collier, Dr. Kazmicek. We wanted to start the update with our student experience in teaching and learning. And so tonight, I'd like to introduce our principal of Central Middle School, Catherine Peterson. And she's going to talk a little bit about the first day for 6th grade. And then I also have Ange Nelson from White Bear Lake High School North Campus to talk about the first day of 9th grade.
Good evening Chair Ellison and the board. First of all, I just want to say thank you so much for inviting us. I've been looking forward to this all day. And you can read what's on here, but what was even more exciting to me today was that I stopped into a 6th grade classroom because I had the adult perspective on this. And I was like, we need to make sure that my adult perspective aligns with the 6th graders. And I stopped in, talked to them, and I said, I just want to hear, I'm going to the school board, explain who all of you were and what your role was. And I said, I'm wondering if any of you would be willing to share anything. And these are 6th graders who are on day five, and there was 31 kids. And I'm not kidding you, when like 16 kids were like... And so I said, tell me what stood out to you. The first two kids talked about web. And they were like, it was so awesome to have the web leaders with us, and for us all to be together. And we were in groups, and you got us to like interact and mix and be with the older kids. Lot of the kids talked about how it wasn't scary. They had been nervous, but it was really nice because there were tons of staff members that were out in the hall, and people were really friendly, and so that they weren't nervous walking around school. And then there were so many kids that were like, it was just calm, and it was easy, and it was friendly, and it was, so it was really fun. And they said they felt better. And I think especially in retrospect, when all of a sudden Wednesday hit, and the 7th and 8th graders were there, and like the building is just buzzing with everybody. And so they definitely said that they would do it again. They had a few suggestions for us on things we could post in Google Classroom to make things easier and that. But my own personal that I noticed too was I felt like, gosh, this was the first year that the 6th graders really knew who I was at the end of the week, and were able to greet me by name. Because I think when they start, and we do the web day in August, and then they start a week and a half later, it's like a lifetime ago, and they forget. And then they get really stressed when the building is really full. So they had a lot of opportunity to interact with a lot of adults. So, thank you for the opportunity. It was great.
Hi, thanks for having me tonight as well. So, much like Catherine said, you know, the students thoroughly enjoyed 9th grade only day. Historically, we do have an orientation, but it's only a half day. It seems a little rushed on those days, and people always say, I wish we had more time. We didn't get to wander around the building or get a thorough tour. So, the way that we structured the day was we did structure the morning very similar to a traditional link orientation. That's, you can see the over 700 9th graders that are at North Campus this year. We're super excited about that. Then, students were able to confirm their lunch pin and eat lunch, get their Chromebooks. And those little things made the following day when everyone there so much smoother. It was just critical that we were able to do those things on that day. They got to do a scavenger hunt, a tour, and then do their whole schedule to meet all of their teachers, and then end with a pep fest. So, again, super great day. Another cool thing about this day for us was that it had teachers 9:12. So both North and South Campus staff were there. And they were able to also participate in some connection activities for staff while the students were doing their student-only activities. So, it was really a fantastic day and a great way to kick off the year.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about something that we tried new this year, supporting kindergarten transitions. So we had our special education paraeducators greet our students at each of the buildings and spent the day with them, their first day. And we got a lot of smiles, a lot of positive interaction, and allowed for a lot of collaboration and conversations that to naturally happen. And so, we're really excited to continue that next year. And the other thing is our 18 to 21. We started four new work sites this year. And so as you can see, our Bear Boards and More, that's a unique work site. It's actually at the Transition Education Center, where we have a laser machine. And this year, they're going to be making different cutting boards and taking orders. And you might have got that email earlier today, and we'll be sharing that out with the district. As well as Northern Tool, the Transportation Department, which is right down the street from Transition Education Center, and North Star Elementary. So we're really excited about all the different things that are coming up this year. Thank you.
And we thought we'd pause here, just to see if there's any questions that you may have for teaching and learning.
Any questions? Ms. Daniels?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say, I looked at all the cutting boards from Transition Education and ordered one for a wedding present this morning. So, they looked great, and I'm really excited to have an order in and see what it looks like. So, thank you.
I have a 6th grader and a 9th grader. And it is exactly as you said. They came home, they were both very calm. And my 9th grader came home this afternoon and said, I know where all my classes are, in the circles. You know, so I think it really is wonderful to have an opportunity for the students to have that day of calm, so that they can learn. So, I think, just from my own small part of the world, that really worked well. So thank you. All right. Okay. Thank you so much.
Good evening Chair Ellison and members of the board. I'd like to begin my brief presentation by introducing, we have a new Assistant Activities Director that started with us this summer. Just so you can put a face and a name to the position, you'll be seeing him around, just like you see me around all the time at all of our activities. But it's Mr. Adrian Turner is with us tonight. So I just wanted to briefly introduce him and let you know who he is.
Welcome.
Talking about our fall sports and activities for this fall, we currently offer nine state high school league sports. And in those nine sports, we have 527 participants. That is above our average, and it is above the year prior to COVID. It's kind of how I'm looking at things from an activity standpoint. Just like anything, those couple years of COVID really hit participation numbers and activities across the state. And so, looking back at, how are we rebounding now as we're hopefully evolving out of that? And those numbers are 527 participants in fall state high school league sports is higher than what it was pre-COVID. We offer 45 other clubs and activities. Our goal is to have something for everyone. And kind of our keynote events, as many of you know, are our Friday night football games. Something very special, very White Bear Lake, and doesn't necessarily happen at other locations across the metro. And something that I think is, something that we are really proud of, is the number of kids we get involved specifically between, whether it's our cheerleaders, our dance line, our band that is there every night, and then of course, the football team. We get many kids involved in our Friday night football. It's more than just about the football team. It's quite the event. So very excited to have those back. And after a couple of year hiatus, have those back kind of full-time the way they should be. Looking at tidbits from last year, as I said, we enjoyed getting back to feeling more normal in our activities, and not having to worry about wearing masks during competition, and having to stay separated, and getting back to normal and having kids around each other. Our participation overall last year was getting near pre-COVID. Like I said, we're finally getting back to that bump. And overall, we had 903 students who participated in state high school league sports. Obviously, some of those students participate in multiple, but we only count them once, so that's where we get to 900. And we had about 1,850 students participate in our activities. And that includes our 45 clubs and activities, as well as our sports. And so that's about three-fourths of our school is involved on an everyday basis in one thing or another as an activity. And I think that's something to be very proud of. Successes from last year, as you saw from the student recognitions that we have every month at school board meetings, we are very successful in the activities office. Four things that I do want to key in on is we had two individuals from our speech team make it not only to state, but made it through the nationals. Pretty impressive. I believe one of you is in that picture, so congratulations there. That was quite the accomplishment for them. Our girls basketball team made it to state for the first time in six years and placed third in the state, only losing to Hopkins in the state semifinals, who went on to win it, and was ranked top three in the country the entire year. So, a pretty impressive accomplishment. In gymnastics, we had two gymnasts, Grace and Laney make it to state. Both placed, Laney on third place, and Grace was the state champion on the uneven bars. That is the first time a gymnast has placed at state in 20 years, so that was very exciting. And then our softball team, for the first time in about 20 years, also went to state last year. So, pretty successful, especially from a girls' team state competition, but very exciting nonetheless. And so that's last year. Looking forward to this year, we are really excited to, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the excitement around our new facilities. And actually finding out this afternoon that, starting tomorrow, hopefully if the punch list goes well, that we will be able to access the new stadium and start using that turf, and a couple other fields later next week, and then obviously, the indoor facilities later this winter. So we in activities are very excited and looking forward to our updated facilities. So, thank you very much. It's all I have.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening Chair Ellison, members of the board, Dr. Kazmicek, Tim Wald, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. I'm going to talk about our operations update. We've had a lot of construction that's continued throughout the summer, and will continue throughout the school year. So, projects that will be underway as the school year starts, and will continue throughout this year, is the Otter Lake Classroom Edition, and that is well underway. And the predicted finish date is mid-December. So, that'll give them time to do the punch list and move students and staff into it in January sometime. So, that's on track. The Onika Elementary Classroom Edition is just beginning. We're just in the final stages of getting permits and getting ready to go on that. That will happen throughout the year, and be completed for next year. And then the Unified High School project at North Campus will continue, of course, throughout the next couple of years. Projects nearly completed, so these are nearly, by that I mean, we're in them, and we're just finishing up punch list, punch list items now. Birch Lake Elementary, the Area Learning Center Phase 2, the South Campus Edition, which I was really being prepared for a future middle school. Lake Air's Elementary, one phase of the Otter Lake Project, which was preparing the Learning Commons, is completed. It just transforms that building, creating that Learning Commons as the center of learning in the building, which was key to all of our projects. As Mr. Peliquin mentioned, the North Campus Stadium is being completed, as well as the 600s area of that building. That's the area, the very north, our construction guys call it the Hammerhead area. Those of us who have been in the building know the 600s is kind of that awkward area in the north part of the building. But that was renovated, and it really is terrific down there now. That's, I visited with the staff, and they were so excited about that new facility. And then of course, North Star Elementary opened this fall, or the beginning of the school year. In terms of construction update, we'll get into it much more deeply at the September work session, when our representatives from Kraus Anderson Architects and Engineers, as well as Wald Architects and Engineers and Kraus Anderson Construction Managers will be here to talk about the projects. The North Star Elementary opening, we held two open houses, one for incoming students and their families, which was a really wonderful evening of students and families exploring the new building, and just considering the potential for their students as they start in this new elementary school. The staff in that building, very experienced staff. So while the building's new, the principal and the staff are quite experienced, and just really enthused about the learning model that they'll be implementing at North Star, and the work ahead of them. So, certainly an energizing experience for all of those people, a kind of once-in-a-lifetime experience to open a new school. The second open house was for the general public, and we had lots of visitors came in and, you know, been driving by it all year and just couldn't wait to see it. So, terrific night. Our Nutrition Services Department stayed busy this summer, as they had summer school and early childhood programs to prepare meals for, make sure that students had a nutritious summer. So kudos to them for their work. They had some neat things happening this year, the new bulk milk dispensers. They had a grant from Midwest Dairy totaling over $13,000. So they were able to buy some plastic tumblers, rack signage, and of course, the milk dispensers. So students at South Campus now, instead of getting a carton of milk, they can, they could choose to just pour their own from the dispenser, and unlimited amount of milk for them. So, some of them took us up on it. There you see one of our football players who probably put a good dent into it that first day. They served, what did she tell me, over, over several gallons of milk that first day anyway. Does it say on there? 13 gallons? There you go, in the first day alone, so. So students will, can get the carton of milk if they want, or they can choose to pour their own and have unlimited milk. And that's from Hastings Dairy. And she said, the product is just superior tasting. So I think students will discover that. And she plans on rolling that out at ALC very soon. So that's a fun project. The construction projects in the kitchens were significant as well. Otter Lake had a complete renovation. So if you, you probably hadn't been in the Otter Lake kitchen, but it was certainly, you know, a 30-plus-year-old kitchen that needed an update. And so we're able to get some new equipment in there. And that's a terrific new kitchen. Then the rest of those updates, just lots of equipment. Things we don't have at home, like tilt skillets, combi ovens. Well, lots of equipment in the, in the new kitchens. Birch Lake replaced their walk-in freezer and cooler, and Lake Air's added a freezer. So, they're pleased with that. At the Welcome Back Conferences, our staff, our nutrition staff attended, so they were able to interact with families, get lots of questions asked, display up that students and families could interact with. And then finally, Farm to School Month is coming in October. And so October 6th is Minnesota, Minnesota Thursday for Farm to School. So everything that's served in our c-. So, everything that's served in our cafeteria on October 6th will be Minnesota locally-produced foods, including Thousand Hills Hot Dogs from Becker, Minnesota, locally-roasted potatoes, pine tree apples, and a local treat. So, we thank our nutrition staff for that great energy they're bringing to the beginning of the school year, knowing their commitment to keep our students fed so that they're prepared for their learning every day. Transportation, this is one of those departments where you get a lot of phone calls and very few pats on the back. But our transportation department is off to a really good start. Of course, the start of the school year for transportation departments across the country has been a challenge for several years as attracting staff has been difficult. We're no different. We're down about six drivers right now. And so, that means we're filling those routes with mechanics and our routing staff, are out on buses every day. But their commitment to getting each of those buses and those routes covered every day has been terrific. And when I say six, that's about three in our office, our transportation office, and three at First Student. So, both White Bear and First Student looking for drivers and trying to cover those routes and hoping for more. Our buses travel over 8,400 miles a day and make 3,300-plus stops every day. So, it's a complex operation. Largest transportation provider in any city is, pretty generally speaking, is the school district. So, thank you to our transportation staff from White Bear Lake, First Student, and we know that that means drivers, bus aides, mechanics, the routing staff in the office, the safety staff. It takes a whole team to keep, make sure our students get transported safely every day. So, we're thankful for those, for those people. At this point, we'll turn it over to Steve Asper with technology updates.
Any questions, Mr. Wald, any questions, or Ms. Thompson?
Just one about the milk. You said they could still get a carton of milk, or they could, is there a price difference? Or it's the same cost?
Yeah, same price, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Steve Asper here to talk about Technology Department and things we've been doing this summer to get ready for the school year. You know, talk about pats on the back, that's our department. We get them all, all the time. We actually, somebody did send us flowers anonymously, which was really great, two weeks ago. So, whoever, if you're here, thank you for the flowers. That was great. The team loved them. So, always a highlight of our summer is our Summer Tech Depot team, students helping us with all the things that we need to have happen over the summer. We had a deliberately little bit smaller team this year so that they could have a little bit more hours and go a little bit more in-depth with the work that we did. But they still did a fantastic job completing in kind of record time 2,000 new Chromebooks, getting them unboxed and enrolled in the system. They cleaned and updated 1,500 used Chromebooks. They got new teacher devices ready. They also prepped all of the Chromebooks for North Star Elementary. And then, they did a lot of installs at North Star. So, they were, we had students, high school students, up in the, at North Star Elementary helping us install computers and telephones and monitors and things like that. So, it was really fun. And they thought it was great to be kind of some of the first students in the building. Moving on, we've talked a lot about cybersecurity. I always give you a little bit of an update, and we will be continuing our Cyber Bear Awareness Campaign this year with staff. We know that we do as much as we can behind the scenes to protect all of our systems. But we also know that a big part of that is end-users and their awareness about their role in protecting our students' data. And I've also mentioned in the past some updates around our learning spaces and furniture. So, when it comes to furniture, we have, almost all of the elementaries have now received their new furniture, except for Onika, who will start that process of ordering this fall, and that kind of aligns with their construction project. So, that's why they're a little bit further behind. And then, secondary, some of the secondary schools will also do, have their next round of user groups for furniture orders this fall. And then, I've also mentioned before, Dr. Robert Dillon, Bob Dillon, he's our designer in residence, and he's been really helpful in a number of projects that we've been doing around the district. So, he's been meeting with teachers, he met virtually with new secondary teachers to talk about space and what that means for our students. He was here in person at North Star Elementary to walk all of the new spaces with teachers and really go in-depth of what this new style of building can afford teachers and students in that new learning environment. And then, he's also been doing ongoing planning with Central Middle School about the time when they take over this space that we're in now, and working with the high school principals as well to talk about that big merger that's going to happen a couple of years from now. And then, the rest of our time has been spent synergizing. Our new student information system, as you know, is, a student information system is the backbone of any school district's data, and so, it's a major undertaking to transfer from one system to another. A colleague of mine in another district warned me, he said it was, there's a reason why it's a once-in-a-career project. I've been learning a lot about that. So, we've been very busy with it. But just to remind you of some of the reasons that we did this, you know, our older system, Skyward, was really out of date, and especially in some of that backend technology. But in addition to that, synergy now will, affords us more flexible grading for students that will allow us to show student growth better, will allow us to do multi-age classroom grading, project-based learning, and also more collaboration between teachers when doing grading of individual students. We've had good feedback from the early adopters of the individual apps that they have, so the Parent View app, the Student View app, teacher, and even the Admin View app that's coming soon. And the platform's pretty mobile-friendly as well. So, how is the implementation going? Well, here's some of the numbers. We've spent hundreds of hours literally working with the company to make sure that our custom setup of their product is working for White Bear Lake area schools. We have provided already over 50 trainings in-person and additional trainings online with some asynchronous materials as well for staff, and trained over 500 staff in the spring and over the summer. Teachers were trained now this fall before school started, and we will continue to do trainings. We have a couple more teachers' trainings coming up this week and next week. We have admin assistant ongoing trainings, and we will do additional training as needed all fall and throughout the school year if necessary. I mentioned the Parent View app. We know that parents are getting into the program because we have, as of Friday, there were over 5,700 Parent View accounts activated. And so, we're really happy about that. We know we still have some parents to go, and so, we'll continue reaching out to those families and those parents and help them as needed. We know it hasn't been a perfect transition for everyone. Our tech tickets tell us that, at almost 3,000 tech tickets since August 1st. So, a little less than six weeks, that's usually what we have in six months. So, we've been working diligently, but we have responded to all of them. We have, we haven't resolved all of those issues yet, but we're working on it, and we've resolved the vast majority of them. So, we know that things are overall going pretty well. But again, in an implementation of this size, we know there are going to be glitches along the way, and we just have to wait until they happen, and then we work on them. And one of the things that we've also done is hired, or hired, rehired, a couple of retired tech department staff members to kind of help us with that, with that extra push as we play a little bit of catch-up this fall. And so, I just wanted to highlight a couple, some of the rock stars that have been doing all the major lifting in this work. And so, there are district staff across the district who were really helpful in identifying the needs of our new program, of help choosing what that platform would be, of really helping us identify how we're going to set it up and how we take advantage of some of those new features. And then, they've also became trainers to help us train other staff in their buildings. So, a lot of staff have been involved with this, and we couldn't have done it without them. And then, there are four people in the tech department that have really played a key role, David Allison, Eloyse Nettleton, Peggy Netto, and Sarah Florin. And it's the four of them who have really taken on the vast majority of this work in preparing data to be transferred, verifying data once it has been migrated, and then fixing it and re-verifying it and re-importing data multiple times. They've worked tirelessly for many hours, a lot of overtime this summer, and not a lot of vacation. So, I just wanted to really give them a little bit of kudos and say thank you publicly to them. And with that, I will entertain questions.
Any questions for Mr. Asper? Ms. Ploden?
With them, were the tickets, the tech tickets that were coming in, was there an overarching theme to the majority of those?
Oh, a lot of them were around Parent View. And yep, some around Student View, mostly Parent View, yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I've got one slide because it really captures the essence of the HR update here, and that is, we are hiring. And we're still hiring. And this is very much what we've been up to over the summer here. So, as I'm sure you're aware, in Minnesota, we have the lowest unemployment rate in the country, which is lovely, except it is making this exceptionally challenging. One thing that I will say is, we've done a really good job. So, at the end of last week, I spent half a day with my colleagues from around the metro and greater Minnesota, and I can tell you that most of them would be very envious of the position that we're in, even though we still have some seats to fill in the district. And so, I just want to highlight a couple of things that we've been doing to put ourselves in a little better position as we go through it. And I also just want to highlight the work that the staff in my department have done here. Summer happens to be our busiest time of the year, actually. And so, similar to technology, a lot of hours, not a lot of vacation, a lot of really hard work. And I also want to say thank you just to all of the hiring managers in the district that in these really tough times, as we're trying to make sure that we've got everything in motion to be ready for kids, you know, everyone's been putting in a lot of extra effort, whether it's been in recruiting, interviewing, just you name it. Because along with kind of the competition for employees too, we've also seen some increased turnover with that too. And so, there's just been a lot of moving pieces. A couple of the things we've been doing, we've talked a little bit about substitutes. We are in a better place there than we've been in previous years. So, we're hoping that we can see some relief on that front. When it comes to our teaching staff, we're in a very good position when it comes to our teachers. We have just kind of the normal shuffling that happens right before the start of the school year, but other than that, we're really fully staffed with all of our teachers. A couple of things that we've been looking at, number one, I would like to thank the school board as well for their support because, over the last two years, we've been taking a really proactive approach when it comes to collective bargaining too, and we've paid special attention to wages for employees that are starting out in the district. And so, whether it's been from teachers to support staff, we're very competitive there, and I think that that's something that shows in terms of our levels of staffing right now compared to some of our neighboring districts. So, that's certainly worth mentioning. Another thing is, we've really tried to integrate as many positions as we possibly can in the district to get people over into, over kind of the hump into full-time status so they can really take advantage of all of the benefits that we have to offer, which does come at a cost, but it also means that we're able to attract higher-quality employees and, you know, we're able to kind of have linchpins in our programs that are excited to be with us and hang out with us longer. So, that's been important in being successfully staffed here. We've done a lot of work on both our internal and external marketing over the last year. And then, we've also tried some new things like recruiting incentives as well for employees that have worked in some of our departments. So, we're trying to really do everything that we possibly can in a really challenging market here, and largely, we're succeeding. So, we do still have some openings. I think the biggest area where we've seen success recently, but we still have a lot of openings is in our before and after-school care. So, when it comes to our programming there, if anybody knows anyone, bring them on, we'll take them. And so, you know, there's a couple of those areas that we're still looking at, bus drivers, some of our paraprofessionals, it's mostly in our support staff areas, and we're working really hard to make it work until we can get fully staffed here. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Mons? Ms. Daniels?
Just a comment, having spent my whole career in education, I'm tied to a lot of administrators still in other districts and people in other districts. And I have to say, I'm just so happy to hear that we're fully staffed with teachers because in so many districts, they have big shortages and lots of openings. So, I want to say kudos to all of your department for doing a great job and all of the hiring managers for really getting people in in front of kids for the first day. It's so important. So, thank you.
For sure. People have really been pulling out all the stops.
And all the staff is so important. I'm not saying, you know, but it's just, it's great to hear that we don't have, you know, half a dozen openings or a dozen. In some cases, some districts have more than that.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Dr. Demester?
I got one thank you that I will pass on to HR. I went to the back-to-school-not picnic with retired teachers, and several of them said they really appreciated the acknowledgement that they got and the encouragement to sign up and substitute with an extra bump because they were a White Bear teacher for maybe two or three decades, and they appreciated that extra.
Great. We certainly appreciate them, yes.
Well, and they were appreciated being appreciated. So, I pass along the thanks.
Keep it going. Sounds good.
Yeah. Pat on the back.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
Right. Thanks.
Look forward to continuing that appreciation across the board here. So, Chair Ellison, members of the board, thanks for having us here tonight and happy to share what's going on in the world of community services and recreation. As Dr. Kay mentioned in his opening report today, the first day of school last week, and I got the pleasure this morning to start my first day at Onika to welcome our first day of preschool for our preschoolers. And while every first day of school is exciting and brings its own thrills and smiling faces, I got to say, there's nothing better than watching our little preschool friends jump out of their cars or off their bus with their faces of just excitement and joy and suspense. And they're just excited to get going to meet their new friends and start their day. So, to start and end their day up there with Onika is a special way to start the week on Monday. So, we welcomed 800, or we are welcoming 832 students into our early childhood program this year between our general ed program, our special ed program, and our ECFE program. So, we're up 55 students from last year. Full-day and half-day programming across the district and in six out of our nine elementary schools, as well as Tamarack Nature Center and Normandy Park. This year, our early childhood team will continue its concentration on the alignment with our elementary counterparts, and whether it's through the implementation of our letters training or MTSS, we continue to work on that alignment to create a stronger system of support for our children as they continue to work through early childhood and bridge their way up to kindergarten, excuse me, that following year. And whether it's through home visiting, community outreach, or family classes or activities, we seek to build that home and school partnership and support families into the future and work hard to help families connect to one another within our schools as well to kind of build that community around them. So, a lot of important things going on in those first days. I hope, I should probably go to the slide. That might help you guys see what I'm talking about here. So, and as far as our enrollment goes, all of our School Readiness Plus sites, which again, is special money there, School Readiness Plus that parents have qualifying benchmarks to meet, that's housed in our, what am I going to think of it? Our, thank you, Title I schools, Vatnus, Birch, Will, and Lake Ares, all of our seats for those are full as of right now, which is very important for us to see. So, going on to out-of-school-time program, including extended day, we do continue to grow. We saw a very big jump in participation over the summer. We've currently started this year with the same number of contracts that we ended last year in the spring. And while our numbers of waitlists on contracts are a little higher than we'd like to see, you know, we are, as Mr. Mons mentioned, with other districts and talking to my counterparts, we are not alone in that struggle as well. Staffing continues to be the biggest obstacle for many districts to bring in and unload their waitlist as quickly as we can. And I do echo his sentiment and do appreciate all the work that his team has done and worked with our team to get creative with positions, to bring as many, bring people in as quickly as we can. as we can to help work with our kids. And our, a lot of things that they've done, you know, working to adjusting the pay rates, offering combined positions with our school day staff, and they're excited to celebrate that we are fully staffed for the number of contracts we accepted to start the school year. So that does feel really good. It's very good for our staff to come in. But our focus right now is primarily, continues to be on that recruitment and retention of our high-quality staff to support the increased demand for this programming. So that is really, they're doing a lot of wonderful things, working with our schools, neighboring colleges, again, working with Mr. Mons' department on partnering positions, getting the word out through our buildings and parents. So I do echo what he says. If you have anybody that has a passion for working with kids and has, wants to create strong relationships with kids, please, please, please advise them and advocate for them to apply because we would love to have them in our program. Our youth enrichment and development team has done a great job getting prepped for this school year, offering, working with 15 new vendors to offer a wide variety of programs for students, opportunities to learn coding, try sports samplers, and even learn about personal finance, which is very, very important. We did have a model change to our elementary summer targeted services program that was a huge success. Students were able to practice their math literacy and social and emotional skills through topics such as Pokemon, nature exploration, cooking, and theater performance, which you will be hearing more of later this month at the work-study session when we talk about some summer, summer learning programs. Moving on to youth rec and middle school athletics, just like every fall and prep and lead into the school year, we have a high volume of kids coming through our rec programs, currently over 900 participants, similar to last year, between our flag football, volleyball, and soccer programs. And again, it's a huge thank you to our parents and community members that volunteered to help work with these teams and coach these students. We couldn't do it without them. So a special thanks to all of our parents and adults in the community that volunteered to work with our kids through our programs because we do appreciate their time and their commitment in making these programs run. And it seems a little early to be talking winter basketball already, but registration for our rec basketball program is open already and with a goal of trying to break 1,000 participants in that program is their goal for this year. And middle school athletics, following what Mr. Pellequin shared earlier, we are also running the same cross-country girls tennis. Volleyball is starting strong and then looking to continue to grow our intermural program for some different options for kids to participate in other activities and such after school. And hopefully this winter, some programs starting in the morning options as well for them. So starting the school year there. And our adult programs, you can't go anywhere and talk to anybody without hearing the word pickleball within a half hour of talking in some conversation. So pickleball continues to run strong. We have nearly 200 members in our pickleball club at this time, you know, so space is at a, we have been hearing from some people about our courts that are no longer here outside behind here as part of the construction, but we've assured them that they are coming back and we will have space for them. So they've been very flexible with us and we'll continue to look to support them and working with our community partners to provide additional spaces for them. Our online learning and adult enrichment programs are very strong with our hybrid approach. We continue to offer during the pandemic and now after, we've seen a lot of success in offering hybrid options for adults to participate in programs either in person or at home in the comfort of their home through our online activities. So that's been very strong and continues to stay that way. And then, you know, a large thing about what we do in our community programs and senior programming is creating that community connection and staying engaged. So if you were around this summer, hopefully you guys and other community members participated in many of their craft corner boutiques, art fairs, flea markets, open houses. This Wednesday from 12 to 3, we're also hosting our 10th Annual Health Expo for our seniors where they'll get to, seniors or their caretakers can meet with vendors to discuss housing, insurance for house and auto, financial services, healthcare, flu shots, and much, much more for them to find ways to get support there. So, yeah, so we do appreciate everybody's participation, and we have a very, very, very lovely time and happy time serving our community and providing those opportunities and look forward to continuing that. So, yeah, any questions? Oh, sorry, I took your line.
That's all right. You said it. We're good. Any questions? Oh, Ms. Plaid.
In the new, not the gym, but the big one, Field House, does that have pickleball lines in it?
Yeah, so I don't know if there'll officially be pickleball lines, but pickleball lines are the same as badminton. So those lines will be used for pickleball. So yes, we do run, we do plan to run and operate and offer pickleball out of the Field House when space permits. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Fifteen? Fifteen.
Fifteen courts. Fifteen courts?
Yeah, so I think there's, what, three per court, right? Yeah.
What is pickleball?
Pickleball is a...
Way too long of a conversation.
Yeah. When I grew up, it was called floor tennis to start, but basically it's a wooden or plastic paddle about yay-bag with a wiffle ball which played on a lower net on the same kind of dimensions as like a badminton court, but it's played on a tennis court. So every tennis court that's redone right now and anywhere, you'll see an additional set of lines on there, and that's what that's for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
So if you haven't tried it, I recommend it. It is a lot of fun.
I had no idea it was.
Adult-sized.
Okay, good.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Hello to all of you. I'm Marissa Venni, the Communications Director, and my plan for today is really to do a little bit of a show and tell, more than, more than words on slides, but we'll, of course, in the Communications Department, we've been doing a few other projects as well, but we pulled together some of the highlights of what we've done for the back-to-school efforts. And so as we prepared for the school year, the event or activities calendar is back, and it's back with activities that are happening in the schools, which is really fun with the uncertainty. That element had been taken off the last couple of years, and so we added it back in. So families, we have been told through communications audits that we've done that, you know, whereas people all, you know, of course, many have a calendar on their phone, we've been told by many parents and families, do not get rid of this paper calendar, it's the best. Thank you for nodding your heads. So that's, that's a little bit surprising and really exciting to hear, too. And it's really fun to be able, you know, the photos and videos that we take throughout the year end up in the calendar, and so we're our own best models, right? The bears, the students are. And so that was sent out to families and has obviously the activities and, and event information, but then it also has important school-related information for families as well. Next was the website, of course, the overall website. But then this year, for the last few years, we've been doing a sort of one-stop-shop back-to-school site where school supply lists for all schools were listed and information about the synergy switchover and trying to, trying to help families find information for all of their kiddos in one place. So we did that again for this year. Of course, then we sent the beginning-of-the-year letters to families that had important beginning-of-the-year info, as well as the directory data info, included information from Nutrition Services that we'll talk about in a second here as well, and other, other details that families really needed to start the year off right. Nutrition Services was fun to work with for this year, especially because of the change back to meals that were no longer free, really making sure that people knew that that was happening, making sure that students knew their PIN. So we even had a test with my daughter, who's nine, and my son, who's 11. We showed them the top right-hand corner, the postcard, and both of them went to type in their code, which was exactly, I didn't tell them to. That was exactly what we were hoping would happen, and, you know, as the postcard would come home, that students would, you know, sort of start to practice and, and get back into that in August, knowing that they were going back to it in September. And then in addition to that, of course, giving families information about the, you know, how to put money into your account again and do all of that, and of course, how to apply for the application for educational benefits for those families formerly known as free reduced lunch. And so we had a lot of, a lot of important things happening in that area. From the communication standpoint, we had fun working with some schools on some videos. We did, they haven't been released to the public yet, but they have been released to the schools, our two principals at Lincoln Elementary and North Star Elementary, and then worked with the high school to do a student video as well. And so we, we had fun this summer doing, doing those things. In August, with Dr. Kastmercheck, of course, worked with Dr. Kay for the convocation event, welcoming all of our staff members back, had a, had a lovely time out on the stadium, the South Campus Stadium, and really pulled together students for performances and, and had a wonderful time, starting again for the school year, getting ramped up. Our families participated, and you would have seen it in the video as well, the back-to-school bears hashtag has been really fun to see, you know, people are generally posting their back-to-school photos anyway, included this hashtag, and then we were able to, to pull those photos and use them for our community e-newsletter that we sent out last night. And then that was the elementary and secondary students, and then, of course, any, this is a plug for any early childhood families, please do participate in this as well. And then our next e-newsletter coming out in a couple of weeks, we'll have our early childhood students, as Mr. Maurer said, their smiles are probably, they're all cute, but the littlest ones are probably the brightest. All right. And then just our regular communications, we're obviously continuing to do that. So every week on Sunday evening, we send out a community e-newsletter to our families and to anybody who's subscribed. That's either a text version or a video version that we send out every week. Of course, we do the 624 facts on social media, so every morning weekdays, people can wake up to a fact. And then on Friday afternoons, we cover three to four events that have happened throughout the week, and then usually have a student voiceover telling us what we're seeing and have a lot of fun with that as well. So we have wonderful things happening. It's really fun for me and Tia Quirk, who's usually with me or behind a camera, to be able to share out what's happening. That's it.
Any questions? Ms. Thompson.
Got a question, just a comment on the activities calendar. Yes, we love it at our home, and we all have them on our phone and we're all connected to each other, but that goes in a certain spot, and we, like, there was a little gap this year in between, which I know is what happens, and I'm always like, oh, when is it coming? So, thank you.
That's good. And it is a really fun tradition in this community that, you know, you would always think that that would go away, and it's not.
But it has everything there, and it's just easy, and it's nice to look at it and see, yeah, so thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it in our home.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome back.
Mr. Malt.
Each year, the first Friday of the school year, we take the enrollment report, or we run enrollment, and that becomes our data for our opening enrollment report. So that's the data we're looking at, is where we were at noon this past Friday. Okay, so we know that our, the pandemic experience was challenging for enrollment, and that's the life we've been living for the last several years. And so this is a more positive enrollment report. We're seeing some positive numbers today. So this is our elementary schools, and in the end, we're at a plus 14 in the bottom right-hand corner at 3749. There's some unusual numbers on here that aren't typical for our opening enrollment report because you see some really big numbers in that final column. We're looking at enrollment September 22, so that's last Friday's enrollment, and then comparing that to where we started last year, and then the difference. So those big numbers, when we look at North Star Hugo, plus 204, because Hugo Elementary was a K-1 school, and we now have two K-5 schools in Hugo. And so North Star is opening 204 students more than Hugo had at K-1 last year. And then Onika, some of those students are now at North Star, so that's the minus 127 at Onika. So that's unusually large numbers, but they're explainable. And then the DLA, we surveyed our DLA families last year and asked if they wanted to continue, and most of our DLA families said they want to be back in learning school, and most of those families did come back. So while we're only up 14 at the elementary level, you see those numbers of pluses at every school, except I guess Otter, and that's, some of that's DLA students returning to their school. The cohorts by grade level are on the bottom, and we have some consistency in our K-1, 2. At the secondary schools, the blue section on top is middle school. So middle school had some interesting things as well. We had an unusually large cohort. Principal Nelson referred to the over 700 ninth graders at North Campus this year. They were all in our middle school last year. And so that large cohort of eighth graders transitioned to high school, so we knew our, we knew our middle school numbers would look, that we'd see some loss there, but that, the gain would be at the high school. So you see minus 121 at middle school. Also on that is we modified the attendance boundaries between Central and Sunrise, and so we had a shift of some students from Central to Sunrise. So when you see the drop of 80 and a plus 36 at Sunrise, that explains that to some degree. Okay, at the high school, you see that 1395, really large number at North Campus. And then, so we're, we're up at both North and South. Our Area Learning Center is down a little bit. Area Learning Center enrollment, generally speaking, is just a transition from North and South into the, into the Area Learning Center. So this is maybe a more positive number that they're a little bit low. It means that fewer students have transitioned into our Area Learning Center, and are finding success at the, in the mainstream high schools. And then the DLA, again, at the high school, minus 48, so those students transition back into bricks-and-mortar schools. So we're minus 121 in middle, but we're up 117 at the high school level, so we're minus four, kind of break even at the secondary level. Plus 14 at the elementary, and that leaves us at a plus 10 in the secondary schools, or, excuse me, overall, elementary and secondary combined. Early childhood numbers have been good. There's been really positive energy. You heard from principals today, the energy in the buildings has been remarkable, and that's true in our early childhood programs, too. I think we, over a couple of years, forget how much fun opening up the school year is, and we've really enjoyed that this year. Early childhood numbers, we're serving 832 students. That was referenced earlier from 777 last year. Really good increases in our early childhood special education programming. And that tells us that that staff is doing a tremendous job of identifying students who need additional support and getting those students their support. The earlier in life they get support, the more likely they're going to be able to try and work their way through school without those additional supports. So thank you to, to our early childhood team for the great work they're doing, getting students support at an early age. And that's, that's all we have for the open enrollment report. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Malt?
All right, thank you.
That's, that's it. That's a lot.
That's all that's going on?
That's a lot. Any final questions for anyone from the board? This underscores, I think, the amount of work that it takes to run a school district. We heard really brief updates from all the different departments, and I think that underneath all of those really brief updates are a lot of individuals doing a lot of work. So I'm grateful for everybody at the district center and at all of our buildings for the work that's being done. Because it does feel different in the buildings this fall. It feels great. All right. With that, we will move on to our only discussion item. Discussion item D1, first reading of school board policies, 506, student discipline.
We don't necessarily have a presentation on it. This is just the first reading, so if there are questions, we stand ready to answer those.
Yes. Does anyone have any questions about policy 506?
A brief comment?
Yes, Ms. Daniels.
Just that I, I, you know, it's a very, very lengthy policy, very detailed policy, and I appreciate the amount of eyes that, on the policy committee and the administrators that work on this really important policy and how they make sure there wasn't a lot of redundancy and really made it understandable. I mean, I just saw a lot of changes that I think were very good, keep us in line with all the laws and work that goes around student discipline, but also remove some redundancy that I think was necessary. So I just appreciate it, I guess. I just know how much work it is to revise those long policies. So thank you.
Dr. Neemester.
Second, that, I had written something along the same line, and I do appreciate that I think, once we see it printed out with all the changes, it'll be even more impressive because it's...
it, I guess. I just know how much work it is to revise those long policies. So thank you.
Dr. Neemaster.
Second, that I had written something along the same line, and I do appreciate that I think, once we see it printed out with all the changes, it'll be even more impressive because it's more clear. I think it'll be clear to everybody participating, and it's got a real positive view on the approach to discipline being positive, restorative, understanding, and, and supportive, to make a good, safe, positive school experience for everybody. So I thought it was a really good step forward, and it looks the way we want our schools to become.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I do.
Oh, Dr. Arcand?
I went through it, and I want to agree that I like the fact that it's really not about discipline. It's about helping our students learn, and so it's not punitive. It's more, okay, you've made a mistake. How can you learn from that, and how can we resolve the issues and restore where it was? And that's going to be an important fact for students that they learn. And, and the other piece is, I like the part in there where it says, "We know that students learn when they're in school." And so that tells us that we're, we're going to, we work hard to keep our students in our buildings so that they can learn, because if we don't, it's very hard for them. So it's, you can tell when you read through it, we're working very hard to help our students navigate issues and rebuild relationships and stay in school and learn. So thank you.
Okay, so this is our first reading of this policy. It will come back to us and for our second reading and approval in October. All right. And now we are into Board Forum. So I would invite any of the Board members to share anything that's happening in the district for, for our Board Forum. Dr. Neemaster.
Said one thing as I, well, I had a lot of thoughts, but I'll restrain myself. And as I read through all the gifts and all the positive things that happened with the volunteers and the students and all of the participation, I thought that the beginning of school was such a positive experience, and all the people that were supporting the school experience with their donations of backpacks and everything the community brought together, all of it was positive. And then, as a retired media specialist, I looked at the Rotary, the generous Rotary Club of White Bear, giving such a large amount to the media centers for inclusive and diverse materials for students. I just, it was just kind of the, the cap on the, the positive things that we're trying to make happen. So I was really thankful for all of the energy and the donations of time and funds.
Ms. Daniels?
On October 1st, there's a, it's called Bear Bike, and it's an activity that some of our staff members and family members have put together to raise funds for community ed, to provide scholarships for kids that want to participate or through activities. And you can still register or donate if you go to the community ed portion of our website, and you can register for a 25-mile bike ride or a 50-mile bike ride. But at this late date, you probably won't get a jersey because they've already, you passed that deadline, but you can still register or donate. So it's going to be exciting. They're going to have a nice route planned for everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Thompson?
I just wanted to share a quick how happy I am to have this year start out on what seems like a more back-to-normal kind of environment, and just all the work that was presented to us tonight. I'm very thankful for everything that you all do for the schools and to all of our staff, just thankful, and here's to another great, fabulous year, and go Bears.
I just wanted to, to give a brief update on a program that Dr. Arcand and I are actually both involved in right now through the Rotary, you know, leaning on what you said, Ms. Daniels, that for the last five weeks, there have been a number of Ukrainian students in our community through the Rotary taking part in a leadership program. And we have a student staying with us. Dr. Arcand has a student staying with him, and I tell you, it's really an eye-opening experience to, first of all, welcome a foreign exchange student into your home, but also students who are coming from a war zone. And it has been tremendous to watch these young people, 14, 15, 16 years old, being such leaders and learning so much here from our civic institutions and our organizations and our schools, and that when they go back to Ukraine at the end of this week, they're going to go back with such hope and knowledge. And I'm so grateful that the Rotary and other organizations have made this possible in our community, and I'm grateful to the White Bear community for opening their, their homes in their arms to, to these students. So it's been a really great way to, to begin the school year.
My Ukrainian is not very good, practicing with my students.
Oh, my, yeah, my Ukrainian is terrible. I learned that mama is mama. So, with that, I would, unless there's anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move for an adjournment?
Motion by Dr. Arcand, and a second, second by Ms. Daniels. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.